Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, March 8th, to order. The first thing I'd like to do is just remind everybody that we're live tonight on TV 79. And I'd like to ask for a motion to amend the agenda to move New Business Item Number One, Discuss and Take Action to Recommend Establishment of a Non-Resident Fee for Senior Center Membership, to right now on the agenda. We have Beth Paris for only about a half hour, so if we could indulge her by letting her go now, and then we'll resume our agenda. So if you guys agree, Krista, Ruth, Sarah seconds, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, terrific. So Beth, thank you very much for joining us this evening. And I think that I would like to just turn the discussion over to you. The Board of Selectmen, over the years, has discussed the concept of a non-resident fee a number of times. And I believe we feel that we're at the point right now where we'd like to investigate that possibility in earnest. So would love to get your thoughts about that and how it will be received by your senior constituents, and then open it up to board questions.
Okay. Hello, everybody. Thank you so much. Thank you for letting me go first, and thank you for letting me be here. You did get the sheet that I did on the non-resident membership fee, why membership. So those are some of the basic reasons why membership is important and actually can boost your program and kind of the commitment to the center and have people feel more a part of the center as opposed to less than part of the membership. So the history of our membership is, we basically had everyone, when I came here, hard to believe, almost 12 years ago now, we had a membership card that everyone had to fill out, and the purpose of the card was basically to have general information on folks, emergency information, some minor health information if, God forbid, we had to call 911, and to know what people's interests were. There were about 200 folks at that time when I first came, we're now to 2,000 folks. So we have a bigger pool of people to choose from. We also have, because we are in such a beautiful building now, with the first five years I was here, we were on Edgerton Street. We've been in the Mather Center since 2014. We moved with 623 members, who basically came because of the programming. We're now where we are today because of not only the wonderful programming, but because of the gorgeous building. And as we saw time pass, because we are not only a lovely facility, but kind of a zero entry and an easier way for folks to get into, a lot of other senior centers are not as accessible as ours in our general location, and because of the programming and the welcoming atmosphere, we grew and grew and grew, to the point that we are now, and these are real numbers, in town, we are 1,108 members, out of town, we are 1,152 members. So over time, I've actually spoken to the commission too about non-resident fees. The reason why I saw it coming, I think really because there's people that have a soft use of the building, a casual use of the building, they love it, they come for programming that may not have costs associated with it, because not all programming does. If we don't pay an instructor, there's not a fee that's associated with that activity. Our entertainments are generally cost-free to people that are participating, they're all paying for lunch. And people started to give me money, Christmas time, that were non-residents, $25, $25, $25, or somebody was very happy with some program or service that they received, and they gave us money. We did do an informal survey, didn't ask about the membership fee, but asked non-residents, 550 of them, and I think that was on your sheet too, that you received, why they come to our center. And it wasn't as saying opposed to your own town, but basically they were utilizing our center more than the centers in their own town. And, you know, 550 people was a pretty good sampling of folks, and you saw the percentages of why people came to us. We, in terms of socio-economically, our non-residents are not folks that are impoverished or near the poverty line. They're folks that are pretty much, you know, solid in terms of their economic and their ability to stay where they are. There are a portion of our folks who lived in Darien all their lives, moved out because they wanted to downsize, and there weren't the options. The Royal wasn't right around the corner at that time, and there wasn't as much ability to find condos for them to live in. So they moved to Norwalk, especially Row 8 in that area, and then over the line to Stanford. We had quite a few people also who have always worshipped in Darien. We had a number of people who worked as teachers, librarians, people who just have family here or their best friend lives here. So generally, the only senior center in our area that's exclusive residency is New Canaan. Of all the rest of us, welcome non-residents in. New Canaan is the only one that's exclusive, and you can't become a member. So membership was never tied to money. It was more or less for us to be able to program even more efficiently and for us to actually have an emergency ability in case, God forbid, somebody happened to someone. So I mean, I even have the demographics of age. Folks that tend to go to the senior center five days a week are in that over 85 range, and the net, which is like 27%, and then 80 to 84 goes to 15%. The next higher one is, believe it or not, 75 to 79 is 18%. This is our senior center specifically. We have a software called myseniorcenter.com, which we just started to use actually before the pandemic, was the first, we would have been at a full year of using it, but we ended up having to close for a period of time. So these are accurate numbers. And again, when we reopen, I don't expect right away that everyone's going to be coming back, so, you know, we're not going to base the membership, the idea of what money might come in if we do have membership fee on these numbers, because these numbers will, we're going to see what's going to happen as we open incrementally, and then when we fully open in terms of people coming back. I can tell you virtually, we have a lot of participation, both non-resident and resident. Our lunch program though, we've only been doing for Darien residents. We basically have the chef and a building, and we're down one building attendant at this point. So we're not doing more than 50 meals a day, we're averaging about 45. We're still doing specials, like, well, we'll be doing St. Patrick's Day pretty soon, and which will go up to 75 meals, so we're still doing thematic programs. And again, the meal aspect of it, we're not offering to non-Darien residents at this point. We have always offered all of our programming to Darien residents as a priority, and we will continue to do that. And I'm not recommending a membership fee to our own residents, basically only to non-residents. I feel that it will be received well. You know, we have some time, but there's no time limit on this at this point. But I also did my own recent soft survey with all the other senior center directors as we meet with each other on a regular basis now, we're doing a lot of sharing of virtual programming. And Fairfield is going to go to a non-resident fee, Trumbull is going to go to a non, they never had one before, Trumbull's going to a non-resident fee, Stratford's going to a non-resident fee. Stanford is a different animal, because it basically charges $90 a year, excuse me, $80 for a single, 120 for a couple, but then they pay for no programming at all. All the rest of us either have a membership fee or don't have a membership fee. Westport is the only one at this point who has non-residents that can come in that isn't charging a non-resident fee and not looking at charging a non-resident fee. Those fees I met, those senior centers I mentioned are all looking at $25 a year, and they're all looking at kind of making this so probably in 2022, when we know we will be fully open completely, so that we're providing total programming and total services, inside and out. We know the virtual program was going nowhere. If anything, we're going to be offering, you know, evening caregiver groups and all sorts of things because of this virtual aspect. And again, that doesn't have the limits that inside does. But, you know, I think it's an idea, it's an idea that's time has come, and I think for the people that casually use the center that are non-residents, I don't think that they're going to have a problem with, you know, a nominal fee. Kate, and Janet and I have to speak about this, like the how and the when. But there was an interesting question that was on the sheet about charging different fees for programming, and one of the things we were thinking about is, and this is also another thing, all senior centers are about $4 a class, $4 to $5 a class. Most are drop-in, some because of the viral situation have gone to four to six to eight-week programs that you pay all at once. If you have a non-resident membership and you have somebody who just wants to casually come into the building, if they want to participate in one of these programs, you could make that fee for that program for that person who doesn't want to become a member a bit higher. So it's an incentive for folks to pay the membership fee as well. So I'll be quiet so you can ask me questions.
Thank you very much, Beth. You answered a couple of my questions. You know, it's interesting to see that we have more non-residents than residents.
Right.
Using our center at this point in time. And I think from a policy perspective, we on the Board of Selectmen acknowledge that, you know, there are operational costs to running a senior center. And so, you know, I think the idea, the time has come for this idea, but I would like to turn it to my board for questions to that before she asks.
Sure.
What is the suggested fee?
Right now, from Kip, from listening to the other senior center directors and what they're looking at, they're looking at $25 a year, but that doesn't mean that, you know, that we can't look at something else, but as a reasonable place to start, I think also people will continue to make donations if the $25 is, it's still a very nominal fee. But that's pretty much where everybody's starting off from, is from that fee base.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Krista.
Staying on that same type of question, Beth, thank you so much for your background in the presentation, that was very helpful, but could you compare our facility perhaps to the others who are looking at $25 for an annual fee? Would you say they're comparable facilities and programs and program for the residents and non-residents?
I would say programming-wise, that they would probably be on par. I would say facility-wise, Stanford for sure isn't, because it's on the second floor of the government center, it's a fine building, but it's not accessible. One of the things I've been helping this Stanford senior center director with is talking about how they need a building that's accessible and why so many of their residents come to us. I know, you know, want to be egotistical and say because we're far superior, but part of it, the great part of it is that you park and you can walk in the building. And so that's one thing, but in terms of, but in terms of the beauty of the, I would say, Westport, and our centers probably are the most beautiful centers. The other ones, many of the other buildings are renovated schools. Fairfield, the Bigelow Center is a huge complex, but it was an old elementary school. It's been done over very nicely. Trumbull is the same. So your, our building is probably the nicest of all the buildings in terms of modern.
I was just thinking, conjunction with your ideas of how much you were thinking of charging, to sort of, is it a good comparison to say our facility is similar, our programs are similar or not?
I would say I would base it, I would base it more on the program similarity, just on the, because I think the idea that the folks are really coming in for the services and the programs that you're providing, the environment's lovely, but I think at this point, you know, thinking about still the idea of bringing people in for the mental health reasons, for the socialization, for all that, we're kind of equal that way.
Fair enough. Then my other question, thank you, as far as back to the programs, do you have any sense for what percentage of the programs charge a fee versus no fee to?
We have, yes, at this particular point in time, we have 17 exercise programs, all of those are charged for. We have, one, two, three, we have 10 academic programs that have charges associated and four art programs that have charges associated with it. We then have another 35 programs that are done monthly or through the year by volunteers that are not charged for. Academic, they're academic programs, they're service programs. Actually, two are exercise programs, an occupational therapist runs a sitting program for free, so there are those programs, and then the fun stuff.
So is it about 50%? I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yeah, I'd say about 50. Yes.
All right, thank you. That was my question. Thank you very much, Beth.
You're very welcome.
Beth, it's David Martin. I just wanted to double check. I thought I heard in the presentation, you were talking about implementing this beginning January of '22, is that right?
I think many of the senior center directors, when we've been talking about doing this, that was kind of the goal that we were having, based on the fact that we felt this pandemic would be in control, over or nonexistent, and at that time, we'd be fully functional the way that we're going to be coming out of this. So thinking that at that particular point in time, you know, beginning from soup to nuts, and here's what we're going to be doing as part, but if we could do it, if we could do it sooner, we would do it sooner. A lot, like I said, Kate and Jen and I have to sit down and really talk about the how and the when, because there's got to be some policy around it as well.
Sarah, I see Sarah's hand.
Do you, Beth, could you talk about the, what you would like to charge, you know, per program if you find that the non-residents don't want to pay the membership fee? I know you were saying it would be four or five times, that it would make sense for them to join, you know, is it $5, is it $10, is it depend on the program or some more than others to cover the cost, the materials?
What we've been doing is, we are, and Kate can chime in if she would like for this part of it, we are considered to be revenue neutral, but we would like to give back at least half or better of the programming expenses that are, you know, support the program. So what we've done with all of our instructors, if an instructor is getting $45 an hour for an exercise class, they have to bring in at least half of whatever they're being charged. So all of the instructors, depending on what they're being paid, have to bring in half of what they're charged. Now, there are several exercise instructors that are so popular that they bring in their pay and more. And to a certain extent, they might make up for a Spanish class that's smaller, that's not covering its cost, so it's sort of like, at least that half cost, so it sort of balances itself out. We do do our best always to get as many things, as many programs as we possibly can that are just free of charge. And, you know, one of the things about Darien, one of the many awesome things about Darien is there's so many incredibly talented people. You can't even imagine the programs that we've been running. We had a whole bird sanctuary program from a gal, we built birdhouses, we had, we watched birds being hatched, oh my, she did it for like a three, four month period, charge, no charge at all. She actually even paid for the wood, the paint, the whole nine yards, and we had a wonderful experience. So that, you know, there's a lot of things that happen that way as well. We haven't done more than a $4 or $5 fee. When we were just having Mahjong classes, those all paid for themselves too. The teacher asked for a certain amount of money, we did $5 per class for that, and again, that person made more than they were charging us. We're hoping that becomes a trend for us. So, you know, that's what we're shooting for, is to get more programs in like that, that it ends up really like a balance. I know with the food program, we get very close to washing out the amount that we pay for food with the food, with all the food that gets purchased, with the food that gets purchased as lunch. So we want to be able to do the same thing for programming. That's kind of a goal of ours. Yes, Krista?
Do you have any sense as to the cost associated with initiating this program? If we, you know, going to a membership fee?
We already, we already have the, we have the software, so that's, it was the same software that we got, we have these statistics, we can utilize that software. We have, just happen to have an open position right now, that when that position gets filled, that person's going to, that'll be one of their job duties. We're just going to add job duties like we do to the program specialist and myself as things come up. So there will be, it's just the figuring out of how we're going to do it. We also didn't have, we also do have volunteers that have done for my senior center, almost all of the inputting of the backgrounds of people, their names and all that. We have three gals that helped us with that. One person actually was your assistant finance director in Darien Public Schools that helped us. So wherever we find talent, we have that talent help us as well.
Okay, so there's no cost to initiating a non-resident membership fee?
At this point, not that I can think of.
And is it more cumbersome to charge a non-resident per program fee than to just charge a non-resident membership fee, Beth?
I think if we're going to, if we were, if you're going to be paying $4 as a Darien resident for a program, that's a drop-in program, and the non-resident's going to be paying $5 or $6 for that program, you're going to have a teacher that's going to have to watch out for that, and quite frankly, most of them don't like to do that, or we'll have to chase after the person to make sure. I mean, most people are pretty honest, but we haven't, I think, I think the one membership fee would equalize people feeling connected too. So if you pay your $25, you pay your $4 to this drop-in class that has this charge. If you choose not to be a member, then I think that we would, you know, charge more per class for that person. So it's a way to incentivize, I think, by keeping it the same.
Well, I guess you wouldn't really have that situation, because you either have to be a non-resident member or you can't participate in the programming, correct? That would be part of the policymaking?
That would, that could be part of the policymaking, or you can say, if you choose not to be a member, I mean, this is one of the things that we have to talk about too, is if somebody just wants to come into the building and have a cup of coffee, do we impose and say they don't want to be a member, say they don't want to be a member? Are we allowed to impose membership on them? So it's, you know, and how do we incentivize that for them? Or will we have that situation? I'm not sure we'll have that situation, but, you know, you never know.
Yeah, you know, for me, thinking about a membership fee and program fees really, again, ties back to the expenses that the town in curse will operate.
Right.
And, you know, for somebody coming into the building to have a cup of coffee, they're enjoying the facility, you know, the custodians work, your work, the software that you use. So, you know, I recommend that we create a policy that's easy to, for everybody to understand and, you know, we just have one policy, we don't have multiple policies for people to navigate.
I agree.
Okay, so the, if there's no other board questions tonight, really what's before the Board of Selectmen is a motion to approve a concept, the idea of a non-resident fee for the senior program, the details of which to be worked out between Beth and other staff. So I'd like to ask my board if you have any additional questions for Beth this evening, and if not, I'll read the motion. No, okay, seeing none. The motion is the Board of Selectmen for Town of Darien believes that it's appropriate to establish a non-resident membership fee for the senior programs at the Mather Center. The board hereby directs the senior programs director to work with the finance director and the town administrator to consider an appropriate fee that is based on covering operating expenses and to propose same fee to the board for their approval at a future meeting. So I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
It moves. Now to second, Sarah seconds. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Great, that's unanimous. Okay, Beth, thank you very much for your time this evening. Oops. Thank you, Beth.
Bye-bye, thank you.
Okay, great, thanks very much. We will resume our regular programming now. So for Selectmen's report, this past Friday and Saturday, 690 Darien Public School teachers and staff received their first dose of vaccine. I want to publicly thank and congratulate the school nursing staff and the town health and human service staff for this, as the Darien Times put it today, historic collaboration. Only between 15 and 20 members were not able to receive vaccines due to quarantines, and they will be scheduled in accordingly. Second doses will be administered on April 4th. The town is partnering with Post 53 to vaccinate about two dozen homebound Darien residents in the coming couple of weeks. So that's exciting and really welcome news for those folks that couldn't actually make it into a clinic. And next week, the town will begin vaccinating over 160 nursery school teachers and licensed childcare providers. Each week in my code-red messages, I give instructions to folks on how to register a vaccine if you're eligible. Given the size of the eligible population in Connecticut and the limited vaccine supply, you will likely have to wait several weeks for an appointment. The governor is urging everyone, and I join him, in being patient and waiting for your turn to be vaccinated. I've received several very frustrating emails from people that can't immediately get a vaccine appointment, and I know that that's really difficult news to hear when you've been waiting this long, but a little additional patience, and I'm sure as supplies ramp up, everyone will be able to get worked in for a vaccine. The U.S. Senate passed the American Rescue Plan with some changes that need to now be approved by the House. House passage is anticipated. Of the $1.9 trillion spending plan, $2.9 billion is earmarked for the state of Connecticut relief, and $1.6 billion will go directly to Connecticut cities and towns. According to CCM, direct assistance to the town of Darien is currently estimated to be $2.1 million. There will be additional monies in the American Rescue Plan allocated specifically to local boards of education. Those estimates have not yet been provided. Funding will be distributed from the American Rescue Plan between now and the end of 2024. As is typical during each legislative session, the concept of home rule has been used in a variety of different ways. Attorney Fox has prepared at my direction a memo outlining the concept of home rule and how it applies to the town of Darien. I've sent that memo to the Board of Selectmen and Moderator Morton for your review and distribution as you wish. Updates on various pieces of legislation are noted in my first Selectmen report, and I will be distributing this to the Board of Selectmen at this meeting. I won't go through all of these. This is an abbreviated list of notable pieces of legislation, and they will be attached to our meeting minutes as well. That's it. Tell me, Kate.
Just wanted to remind you all that Tuesday is the public hearing on the budget, and that's it.
Okay.
And...
And, um...
I hear an interesting peeping voice.
And remember, the person who's here under Kate, please stop logging in and out or turning your audio on. Okay.
Okay, terrific, thank you. And we've moved our public comments up to the top of the agenda. Do we have anybody here for public comment this evening? If you wish to provide public comment, please indicate by writing your name and your address in the chat. We'll give you a moment to do that if you're here for public comment. Otherwise, Kate, have we received any written public comment?
We had not received any written comment.
Okay, thank you. So I'll just give another couple of seconds to log into the chat if you want to make public comment. And this is how each of our meetings are going to go for the public's knowledge while we're in virtual posture, which I do hope will end sometime soon as gathering guidelines are relaxed. But while we're virtual, if you want to make public comment, you can join our meeting and just put your name and address into the chat function, and we will acknowledge you. Okay, I see no one logging into the chat, so we will move on to Board Liaison Reports. Why don't we start this evening with Kit Poons for the Oxford Elementary School project?
Well, the camera that we promised that would be viewing the construction site is up and working, and it's also on the town's website so that you can go in at any time and see what's going on with our construction project. It was on the front page, I think, of the town website, so that hopefully a lot of questions can be answered by looking at what's going on or not going on, as the case may be. Foundations are in, we are awaiting soon the structural steel, so we're, we're on target and we're moving forward. Hopefully, we'll, the weather will give us a little bit of a break, and we'll be able to progress more rapidly. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Sarah? Nothing tonight?
No, did it this time.
Okay, thanks. And David?
Uh, nothing tonight, our next meeting is Wednesday.
Great, okay. Thanks, everyone. All right, we're gonna move on to new business item number two, discuss potential revisions to the sidewalk snow removal ordinance. We're certainly hoping that the 2021 snow season is over, but each and every year, when it does snow, as, you know, we experienced more snow this year than the last couple of years, we get a lot of complaints about folks who do not clear the sidewalks in front of their homes or businesses within the regulated time period by ordinance. And Kate certainly has been dealing with this issue for a very long time. So I would like for Kate to talk to us about what she believes would be the necessary changes to recommend to the RTM on the snow removal ordinance that would facilitate a better, more enforceable process.
So we do, you know, I sent you a copy of, including your pack, it was a copy of our ordinance, and it does include fines, but the fines are issued by the police if they were to be issued, and the manner in which they're issued legally, it, it's, makes it more difficult to enforce them, get them paid, because of the, the process that they follow. What we've seen in other towns, we did some, I did some research on what other towns do in their ordinances, and there are a couple of things that I think would make it easier for us if we take it away from the police being a ticket, that would be helpful. But the real problem, I don't think, is the fine or the amount of fine, it's that even if there were a fine, people who don't want to do it aren't going to do it. And, you know, we can have an ordinance that says 24 hours after the snow stops, you need to clear your sidewalks. And so what if you don't do it? The kids walking to school, or your neighbors walking to the train station, they still can't walk across the sidewalk because you haven't cleared your snow. So the fine doesn't do us a whole lot of good. What we've seen other communities do is they give the public works department the authority to go in and clear, clear the sidewalk if you haven't after the 24 hours has passed. And if the town has to go in and clear the sidewalk for you, the, the ordinance is give the town the right to lean your property for the amount of the, the cost of clearing the sidewalk. So it's another way of issuing a fine, and make sure the sidewalks get cleared in a timely fashion. I did send you all an email with some of those ordinances. Think the most interesting one was Enfield. In their ordinance, the public works director is actually the one who deems the moment when this, the snow has stopped and the clock starts, and if you were to go to their website, they actually have a countdown clock on their website. I'm not sure that we have to go that far, but I, I think that, you know, the, the way to get it to work is to give us the ability to do the work and charge, charge the residents back for having done the work if they're not going to do it. It's the only way I see you getting the, the road, the sidewalks actually cleared for the kids, for the commuters.
So in your description, Kate, you said it gives the town the prop, the ability to lean a property, but there's a step in between there, right? If public works were authorized to go in and clear, we would have to institute a whole billing?
Yes.
Right, right? Okay. And so there would be additional costs associated with the clearing of sidewalks, with the whole, whole billing and appeals process and, you know, non-collectible debts, and then, and then a legal process, right?
Yes.
And, um, has our public works director opined on how much additional staff it would take, or would we get this work done by contract?
We have, we have had a brief discussion about it. Our discussion was more along the lines of how do we determine what the cost of clearing would be? I don't think we would need to add additional staff because we're talking about 24 hours after the snow has stopped. So one would hope that we have cleared the roads and we could free up staff if we need to go do the sidewalks. But it is conceivable that it could be hiring an outside contractor to do it. Again, the, you know, the real key there is determining what the cost is, what we're going to charge the people who don't clear their sidewalks or are having to do it.
Who bears the legal liability for the sidewalks not being cleared? You know, if somebody doesn't shovel their sidewalk and someone gets injured by virtue of that, or if the homeowner? So then, isn't there an issue with town staff going on to those sidewalks and doing the clearing work and the transfer of legal liability?
Uh, that's a very good question. I don't know.
Okay.
I don't think it's that simple, Jamie. Because often what happens is, even if you clear a sidewalk and it's a big snowstorm, the town will do a secondary plow and throw stuff back onto the sidewalk, and who's really responsible? I mean, this becomes a crazy game. As someone who has to pay to have a sidewalk shoveled every time there's a snowstorm, I'm looking at my most recent bill of $75, and who has a bill for snow plowing of this winter of over $13,000, I can say it's not an easy story to worry about who's to blame. You want to get the place cleared, you want to get the sidewalk cleared, and you don't want to waste a lot of time figuring out who's responsible, who's liable, and all this stuff. I'd say, I would say let the public works department clear if they have to. They've got a brand-new machine which is powered and can blow the stuff right off the sidewalks very quickly. And if the people don't do it, you can talk to them, or you can hire the contractor that they should have hired to do it. I, I just don't see, I mean, I look at the ordinance, the ordinance is incredible. Do we have a, do we have an appointed hearing officers for snow citations? I don't think so.
We do not.
Yeah, I mean, this is a page and a half of legalese that is more than enough to, to confuse the average person.
Um, so I think if I'm hearing you correctly, and I, and I would agree, the only reason to raise the liability issue is that it's real, and we have to acknowledge if, if the thought process is that we're putting town employees on private property, that issue has to be addressed in some way.
Sidewalks are not, are not private property.
No, but I think if we take on the clearing, say you, you refuse to plow your sidewalk, so we go and do it for you, and then...
It's still town property.
Right, but no, we don't on the sidewalk in front of your house.
We have a right-of-way easement, I believe, on that property, and we can get our, our attorney and Ed Gentile to talk to us about that.
Yeah, it doesn't mean that people aren't going to sue us for damages when they just trip and fall on the sidewalk, right?
They'll, they'll sue you for everything.
I think what Jamie is trying to say, that if we clear this, if we're now taking on the responsibility of clearing the sidewalk, and we don't do a good job, and somebody slips and falls, or even if we do do a good job, somebody slips and falls, do we have additional liability that we didn't have before? And I think we need to have the attorney, our time attorney.
The owner doesn't do it, and you're doing it as a result of the owner's failure to take, take the responsible action, which he's required to do, are you now in his place instead of liability?
That's, I think that's the question Jamie raised.
That is the question.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is the question. And I'm, believe me, I'm very empathetic to the issue of folks that do the right thing, they clear their sidewalks, and then either the town or the state, quite frankly, come back and deposit the snow back onto the sidewalks. In that case, our ordinance waves your, your, your need to clear the sidewalks within 24 hours. So, you know, the way the ordinance is written, it really doesn't have teeth, it doesn't facilitate a, you know, an appropriate clearing of sidewalks within a reasonable period of time. And, you know, people are being put in harm's way because they walk in the streets then, even if they can't walk on the sidewalks. So I really love that we're looking into this issue. It's been a nightmare for as long as I've been around, and I'm really eager to hear what, how other towns handle it, who does it, who does it well? And, and there may be staffing issues that are associated with this. We may have to put certain parameters around where the town would take on the responsibility of clearing sidewalks if homeowners don't or businesses don't, but then know that likely, you know, a lot of people in town will take that option, right? Well, if I don't clear my sidewalk, I know the town's gonna do it and just send me a bill. So we have to understand what, what potential ramifications are by instituting a program like that, and are we ready to take on that, that responsibility and that added cost burden? But I've done enough talking, so let's hear from Sarah.
As someone who walks daily, it is very difficult when there are sidewalks that are continually not cleared, but I am more concerned about the commuters and the kids that are going to school. I continually see some addresses on Hollow Tree and the kids that are walking up to Middlesex, that's a big hill, and the kids are slipping, and it's difficult. I worry about putting this on public works. I do know that between the school staff and, and public works are working very hard in the first 24, 36, 48 hours to clear all the sidewalks. We did have a lot of snow this year, most years it's not so bad. I think about that year, was it seven or eight years ago, we had 90 inches of snow? I mean, it was painful. I just wonder about the manpower, and I don't know, it's hard to, to guess what it would take, how long it would take, you know, have we identified, are there 15 particular addresses that are continual offenders? Kate, Jamie, do we know if there's a, a list of people that are continually doing this or not doing it?
I don't think that there's a list, and circumstances change from year to year. You know, we're certainly mindful of people that might have illness or physical disability. We get support for them through the Shoveling for Seniors Program, which is great, love that, but no, I, there's, there's not, there's not a repeat offender list. Maybe the police might be able to say if they visited certain addresses more than once. But, you know, I, I think what we're, we're trying to strive for is a holistic solution to a longstanding problem. Krista?
I do like the idea that we're trying to solve the problem, which is clearing the sidewalks. So I like that approach of we're gonna solve the problem, and then we'll figure out how to disperse the cost. So I'm absolutely in support. I would like to hear more about how other communities are charging and how that profile works. When Sarah, you mentioned the schools, is this something we could do in partnership with the schools and have them take a radius around a school? They have the facilities clear, so just a thought there also. We're looking at manpower, that we could partner with the Board of Education, the Darien Public Schools. I think, I'd like to hear a little bit more about how other communities are handling the cost factor, but I like the direction this is going, and I think it's the right one.
Any other comments or questions from the board? I'd love to continue to research this. There is an intersection with this problem and the construction of new sidewalks in town, because we have to acknowledge that the more sidewalks we, we build, the bigger this problem becomes. So it behooves us to try and solve it so that we can, you know, feel free to continue to expand our sidewalk inventory and know how we're gonna take care of the, the maintenance and responsibility, snow and ice. So there's no, there's no action to be taken tonight, we'll continue to work on this issue. We'll get input from our own public works department and research what other towns are doing, and, you know, come back to the Board of Selectmen with some recommended changes to the ordinance, if, if any, and then we'll take it from there. Yes, Kit?
I would just say, I agree with Krista, solve the problem first, clear the snow as rapidly as possible, and take this ordinance and go back and rethink it. This is crazy.
As are most ordinances.
Well, this is, this is a legal mumbo jumbo of nonsense.
Well, you know, it's, it's not unlike the, the plastic bag ordinance or any other ordinance that we put, right, or the blight ordinance that has to...
Congratulations, congratulations to all of you politicians.
Okay, if there's nothing more on that topic, then we will move on. We've got a number of guests here this evening to assist us with the next item, which is discuss a request from Baywater Properties to utilize town parking spaces for outdoor dining. And I believe that we have David Genovese and Jeremy Ginsberg with us this evening. Great. You know, first I want to say thank you so much. I know it's been one heck of a year, David, for local businesses, and the Board of Selectmen and the town has welcomed the opportunities that have arisen to support our local businesses, particularly our restaurants, to help keep them going. You've done yeoman's work. You know, I think that you're the envy of every town in Connecticut for innovative ways to have restaurants be successful through a pandemic, so maybe you'll write a book about that. But, you know, to the extent that we can continue to help you, we'd like to hear about your proposal, and then, you know, talk about the fact that your, your request really is going to probably transcend the governor's executive orders on, you know, COVID restrictions, and how we square that with parking in the downtown. So, thank you. So thanks for being here.
Oh, please, thank you for having me. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I have a new computer, so I just want to make sure I know how to work it. Um, thank you so much for having us tonight. With me is Mario Fontana, the founder of Bodega in Darien at 980 Post Road, um, as well as Kate Perez and Lisa Elwell from Baywater Properties. Um, I would like to just quickly say thank you too, to all of you for just being so incredibly responsive um, through the pandemic. Jeremy's here too, and zoning, the zoning commission, and Jeremy in particular deserves special kudos in my mind, because, you know, as I say all over and over again, it takes a village to do what we do well, and um, this was a real team effort to scramble in the early part of the pandemic um, to expand the outdoor dining and do the kinds of things that we did, um, allowing Joyride to do an outdoor pop-up cycle studio, and I mean, the list goes on. So um, I'm proud to say that we didn't lose any tenants um, as a result of the pandemic, knock on wood, but for one that was, had issues with us before the pandemic. Um, but actually, we signed a lease with a new restaurant tenant, Parlor Pizza from Wilton, um, who'll be opening up in the next month. And, um, you know, we are really, really proud of what all of us did together. Um, the restaurateurs really deserve the lion's share of the credit, but we, none of us could have done it without your support. Um, so a bit of quick back, quick background. Um, the pandemic did teach all of us a lot of lessons around, you know, the need to innovate and what people's, how people's tastes were changing, and we think that some of the impacts of COVID will be longer lasting. Um, one in particular that, you know, we are very confident based on what we're hearing from the restaurants and seeing in other parts of the country is outdoor dining. The demand for outdoor dining, we think, is going to continue to be very, very strong. Um, because we think people are honestly a little bit traumatized by what we're all going through today and what we've been through. Um, but we also just think that, you know, people have a new appreciation, a greater appreciation for being outside. So, um, because of that, we've worked with the zoning commission to um, execute a major expansion of the outdoor dining and improvement of the outdoor dining at 1020 Post. Um, you know, we are also trying to position our restaurants well for what happens in the future when the Corbin District opens. We hope to begin construction next month. Um, and as part of that, uh, Bodega, Mario, who is really one of the most innovative, you know, well-respected restaurateurs in Fairfield County, he has Bodega in um, in Fairfield as well. He has, he and his partners have Valencia and Norwalk, and he had Habana and Ocean Drive in Norwalk years before. Um, he's a really, really seasoned restaurateur and a great guy, and they've done well. Um, they would like to expand the outdoor dining or keep the outdoor dining um, that we had. Can I share my screen? Can you allow me to share my screen, Jeremy or Kate?
Yeah, just give me a sec.
Because I think I can pull up. Hope I can do this. Excuse me. I think I need your permission to do it.
Yep. Okay, try now.
Um, okay. Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. So this is the memo that we shared with you. We've added a couple of slides, and I'll send you a copy of this as well at the end of this call. But going back just a bit, the, the building at 980 Post Road, the, the building itself, when it was built, the landowner donated the rear of the property to the town to create the outdoor dining, or the outdoor parking, the expansion of the municipal parking that exists in this area. So the owner of 980 Post Road, which is here, um, and later the owner of what is the Black Goose Grill, or the Goose, they actually donated this property to the town to expand the Center Street parking lot, and thus became exempt from the onsite parking requirements of the zoning regulations. Let me just show you what, what we did during COVID was this. Uh, we had a 30 by 35, uh, foot tented dining area serving Bodega. The Goose had a separate outdoor dining area in the back here. They had their own tent. Um, and we also have this one piece of property which we retained, or the original owner of the property had retained, which is 12 by 16, and that, that isn't really relevant because we own that property and that outdoor dining, which is shared between Bodega and Upper Crust has been, you know, operating fine for years. But with the success of this, what we would like to do is reduce it and make it more permanent um, on a seasonal basis. Um, ideally, we'd like permission to do it seasonally for three years uh, with a review of it each year, just to make sure that things are functioning well. Um, we, we presented this to the town, to the zoning, uh, commission, and we're scheduled to have a hearing on it, subject to this conversation. Uh, because you are the municipal parking authority, so you have to first decide if you would allow us to do this um, this year or beyond. But what we would like to do is take these, uh, four spaces, and this fifth space would be lost because you wouldn't be able to access it. We would set up concrete dividers, and by the way, the adjustments in this design have been retooled based upon feedback we received from the zoning department, from Jeremy, and also I think, uh, uh, Gentile and others in Public Works. So this would allow the drive aisle to continue, um, but we would put concrete dividers up like you see um, along 995 when there's construction going on. We're also set up to go to the Architectural Review Board to talk about this, so we have a hearing date um, set up for later this month. But the idea is to literally just keep this going because people have enjoyed it so much, and allow Mario and his team to create a really pleasant outdoor space that doesn't feel as if you're, you know, in a, in a parking lot. Um, you know, these are some details of the furniture. Um, the, and again, this is based, this seat count is sort of based upon uh, social distancing requirements going away later this, this year. We don't know when that will happen, but we suspect that it will. Um, here are some precedent images that you, you know, are kind of inspiring. This is what Greenwich Avenue did. The lower third of Greenwich Avenue was closed entirely, the traffic during COVID. They used the same concrete barriers to protect the patrons. This is a restaurant called Little Beat Table, and what they did. Um, here are some other images of what that looks like. Um, Mario and his team's intent is to decorate, you know, the outdoor dining and really kind of take you away, so you don't feel like you're, you know, in a tent in the back of a parking lot, but rather, you know, you're really in a kind of purposely designed beautiful outdoor space. Um, so, you know, we'd like to, we would like to spend more money candidly and do this well, um, as opposed to what we did last year, which was really just kind of getting a tent up and um, you know, just do, we were doing it candidly to hang on for dear life. Um, now we're trying to kind of take the realization that we have around what the customer wants, and then make something really special back here. Uh, but we know there's no, I don't think there's any real precedent for this, um, which is why we understand if it may be necessary to do it kind of on a trial basis. Um, but, you know, it seemed to us that last year, um, you know, this didn't really have any negative impact on, on the community. Now, in candor, we, you know, being upfront about it, there was, there were less people in their offices, um, so, you know, some of the parking demand, you know, was reduced because of what was happening. But the takeout business of the restaurants was strong, CVS was always open. Um, and, and from what we heard, and I'd be curious as to whether or not any of you heard anything differently, but we never really heard any negative complaints about the impact of, we didn't hear one complaint about a negative impact on parking of all of the outdoor dining that we worked on together last year. So that's really our presentation. Um, would love to answer any questions you may have of me or Mario or Kate and Lisa. Um, and happy to, to talk about it, you know, and then answer any questions you have.
Thank you, David, and thanks to your team. I would say that, um, the having outdoor dining so visibly present in Darien's downtown really created a very welcoming environment. Um, even during COVID, it made a difference when you drove through the town and you saw people outside enjoying themselves. And I really love the idea of, of continuing that effort. Um, a couple of questions. Uh, do you intend to have these tables covered in any way with umbrellas, or I know you don't have a tent planned for here, but will there be coverings of any kind?
Mario, do you want to answer design issue questions?
Yeah, sure. Uh, hi, everybody. Can, can you hear me?
Yes, hi, Mario.
Hi. Uh, yeah, thanks for hearing us out. Um, the, the, the tent is sort of a, of a double-edged sword. Um, on nicer days, people would prefer to be out al fresco. Uh, on the three or four rainy days we had this summer, of course, the tent was, uh, beneficial. Um, when we got to November or October, and we, um, decided to attempt to heat the tent, uh, that was sort of moderately successful. Uh, uh, between the cost of the propane and, um, everything else, it, it really became very evident very quickly that having a tent, uh, over the entire winter uh, wasn't a, a good idea. Uh, but in, in one of, um, David's, uh, photos, yes, the answer is yes, we would, we're going to try and create an environment uh, uh, that's got some great seating, uh, some plantings. We would partner with a local nursery and, um, with, uh, umbrellas uh, that would be dual-purpose for rain and for shade. Uh, it, it, there's a benefit, uh, to the, to the back there, is that that's where the sun is during the, um, during the afternoon. So, uh, we actually had patrons, uh, who would move their table outside of the tent, physically picked it, the table up, and moved the table in front of the tent so that they could be, uh, outside, uh, uh, in the sunshine. So, um, uh, you know, we're operating now probably at about, uh, uh, the, the, the seating in the dining room is probably operating at about 75% capacity, uh, even though, uh, the new executive order would bring us to 100%. Uh, that's not really feasible because we, we have to maintain the social distancing between the tables, uh, or, and/or use plexiglass. So we don't really anticipate that, 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 you know, in, in the next three to six months, that, that the dining room will really get back to full capacity, or to 100% capacity, and, um, nor will the bar, uh, get to 100% capacity anytime soon. Uh, I think we're skipping every, every third and fourth seat, but the bar is really running at 25% capacity. And, um, uh, and of course, there's no standees in the, uh, uh, in the bar now. So the, and, and with, with the governor's new executive order, uh, there are no standees permitted either. So, uh, uh, now one of the problems that we have with the cold weather is that when, when, if people come in and there is no table available, they really don't have, they have to wait in their car, and we, uh, we have a, an app that we text you with, and you, you can come, we let you know when your table is ready. But it'll be great, like, you know, everybody's really anticipating tomorrow when, you know, people can wait outside and, 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 and just hang, you know, hang out, and, uh, and then, and then we can just grab you when your, your table is ready. So, you know, I think it would be great, uh, great for us. Uh, uh, help us, um, uh, you know, become very popular. Uh, uh, you know, I hear that Stanford has really, is really relaxed uh, their, uh, their regs for, uh, uh, for this coming season. I think they're, they're using the 2020 regs. Uh, Fairfield, uh, we are, they're using the 2020 regs, so everything that you were permitted to do in 2020, uh, you're permitted to do in 2021 without going, uh, back to, uh, planning and zoning. Uh, uh, of course, this is a unique situation because we are on the town property. We're not on the, uh, on the landlord's property. So, um, I don't want to keep talking, so if anybody has any questions, I'd, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'm just wondering if you will also, uh, bring in that nice weather and those palm trees that I see in this photo.
Well, right, that's Palm Beach, actually.
Lovely.
But it, 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 but it does represent sort of the, 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 the feel of the striped umbrella, uh, some benches, uh, some, uh, striped umbrellas and, and the plantings. The, the other photo from Greenwich Avenue was actually taken last week. And it was about 11 o'clock in the morning, and the waiters were, were very busy setting up these tables and lighting these heaters for what looked like to be a pretty busy lunch outside, even though it was 40 or 45 degrees out. So we expect that, 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 that come tomorrow, uh, uh, anybody who has tables outside is going to, going to really benefit uh, with the weather, uh, being what it is, because there's still a, a great deal of people who will not come indoor and dine at all. Uh, we saw people in Westport today, actually, um, sitting outside, and it was not a very pleasant day to be sitting outside, but that's unfortunately the reality.
Thank you, Mario. My next question is for Jeremy. Jeremy, where else would you see this issue arising for the Board of Selectmen as the parking authority? Would you imagine folks, uh, you know, restaurants that order the Center Street North parking lot to come to the Board of Selectmen at some point, and trying to understand the impact of a precedent?
Right, certainly, uh, one similar would be the Goose right next to this. Certainly, that's a possibility there. The other one we, uh, talked about is the possibility of a melting pot. As you may know, the inner courtyard area is owned by Penny Glassmeyer, but the surrounding parking areas are owned by the town of Darien. That's on Grove Street. So that would be a potential either melting pot or, uh, flour, water, salt, or espresso neat. There's possibilities there. Going towards the Center Street North Lot, uh, I don't know if there's that much potential there. Certainly, if you look at Burger, Shakes and Fries, they have their privately-owned parking lot behind them, but they do have a lot of outdoor dining to the side there. Uh, I've been in touch, just so you know, as it relates to what Mario mentioned. The Planning and Zoning Commission, this upcoming Tuesday, March 16th, a week from tomorrow, is going to be discussing how they wish to handle outdoor dining for 2021. We've asked a number of property owners who did get approval.
Oh, Jeremy, you're muted.
You're muted.
So as I was saying, uh, the commission's going to be meeting next Tuesday to look at what they approved last year, and for those restaurateurs that wish to do the same thing this year, to, uh, possibly re-up them for 2021 as Mario referenced. Uh, but I think, Jamie, your question here is who else might be interested in using town property? Certainly, the Goose is the most obvious, uh, because they directly bought this parking lot.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, Krista, did you have a question?
I do. Um, well, thank you so much for the presentation, David and Mario. I clearly want to do anything to support our local businesses, especially our restaurants. My questions are really related specifically to the parking concept. Jeremy, in your memo, just to clarify, you thought it might be closer to seven spots. David, you mentioned five. Do we have a reconciliation as to how many spots we're talking?
Um, in our original request, we were a little bit, the, the, the design was a little larger, and based on feedback we got from the town, we reduced it, so it's a total loss of five spaces.
Okay. Perfect. Um, then I do want to know the answer, but there are parking spaces that are designated specifically to this property further in the lot. I know many of the other businesses back there have their designated parking spots. Does Bodega have taken that?
This, this, this building does not. Um, it's different.
Oh, then, um.
It's different than 1020 because 1020, when we, when we designed that project and worked with the town to develop it, we gave the town a right to park on, on our land and also on the land behind 36 Old Kings Highway South, which wasn't being redeveloped, but which we had come to own um, on nights and on weekends for shopper parking and like, you know, nighttime diner, diner parking for the entirety of that, that area. Um, this property is basically, it has actually no owned parking. Um, the, the tenants buy permits, they, they get permits from the town to park in the permit parking areas in the back. Um, at this point, Kate may know. At this point, Kate may know better than me, but at this point, I don't think there are any permits available. But there is two hour parking, three hour parking, and then permit parking in that whole area. I didn't I didn't present a larger aerial of the Center Street Lot, but basically, that would describe how all of the Center Street Lot up to ten twenty post and thirty six Old Kings Highway works. And 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 except for the church, the Cavalry Baptist Church, that is their own parking.
Yeah.
I think that's right, Jeremy.
Yes, that's correct.
These are, I believe, these are hourly. The permitted spots are all further back along the property line. So nobody owns these spaces.
Okay, because that's where I was thinking, is there a trade off that hand over these spaces and reclaim other spaces for the community, but not applicable?
That's right.
David, Martin.
Just want to make sure, I I presume we're talking about trying to get this done for this spring. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So you showed us a diagram that shows full capacity seating, but in the intervening time until social distancing rules are relaxed, we continue to abide by those, right?
Yes, absolutely.
And Mario, I can't tell from the picture, what material is this table that's been given as an example here?
Those are those are actually the tables that we used last year. They're slatted aluminum. And of course, like everything else, there's an acute shortage of outdoor furniture and umbrella fabric this year. So, you know, we sort of have our, you know, foot on the gas and foot on the brake here. Because certainly, we 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 want to make sure that we get a thumbs up from you guys and and from P and Z before we go out and get any purchase order going. But we would be following through with this with with the same furniture that we used last year.
Okay, and David, just for you, if I'm not mistaken, that area that's currently designated as tented outdoor dining, there's currently a fire pit in that area, so there's no tent erected. Would your intent be to put a tent up there for year round purposes? And are there, Jeremy, are there any, David owns that property. What are the regulations regarding putting up a semi-permanent structure on that spot?
Well, for any permanent structure, you would certainly need Planning and Zoning's site plan approval, because it would be like any other structure going up on a commercial property, whether it's a shed, a tent, a building. So it would need a P and Z approval for a tent or other permanent thing. We have had outdoor dining there in the past. Oh, that's been approved many years, David, for Upper Crust Bagels, Bodega, even some prior tenants, some seating back there. It's kind of a, it's tucked away in the landscaping, so it's much quieter, if you will, much tougher to find.
Yeah, and I'm not sure. That may not be accurate. Mario, is that, is your intent to put a tent over that area too? Did we misstate that?
No, the 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 intent is to cover that for whatever the approval period is, if it's if it's March through September, October, that we would cover that portion only. So in the event of rain, that we would at least have one small area that was usable.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, no, that that that's a that's a good clarification, because I was thinking it was going to be, you know, kept up there sort of year round. But I'm hearing you say they would be for the approval period, so it would be effectively the set, you know, for the outdoor dining period timeframe. So that's fine.
Sarah.
That's it for me.
Thanks, David. Sarah.
Just a quick question. Are there any handicap accessible spaces that are impacted by this?
No.
I seem to remember if the last one in the corner was. No, okay.
No. Kate, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay.
I actually have one had one last one.
Yes.
David, if you would back up to the first aerial slide that you have that shows the traffic flow on the first aisle. We're proposing to block effectively block off so that people can't go from the back part of the lot around this area, right? That's going to be a one way flow past the U.
Yes, I think that's right.
If we're going to have a one way flow past the U, does it what does it make any sense to make that first aisle be only one way as well? As opposed to allowing you to back out and proceed out the opposite way? I'm thinking just for for a clarification for all drivers in town, they they know automatically if they turn that down that road, they're going to have to go around as opposed to, right? Because I guess I'm I'm thinking that people, people that end up over where the arrow is at the end of the loop may end up deciding, oh, jeez, you know, I can go out the other side and they'll just go back around that way anyway, even if it's posted.
I think that's a good suggestion, and we could talk about that with with Chief Anderson or Ed Gentile.
Yeah, that's really, that's really more their got their their purview, but when I glanced at this, I just thought, you know, if you leave a door open for people to make a mistake, they will.
Definitely. No, I think that's a good point.
Krista, did you have another question?
I just, I'm trying to get a grasp as to the ramifications of handing over these five spots. Is this going to be a snowball effect? How tight is parking in this part of town? I'm trying to weigh the, I certainly like the idea. I love the idea of the al fresco dining. I love the idea of supporting the restaurants. But do we, is there a concern that this becomes other restaurants, the Goose, elsewhere in town want to take or going to come asking for more parking space from us?
I think that, you know, living these parking space, parking lots, and dealing with it all the time, I guess that what I would say is, on a relative basis, what we're really talking about is, you know, for us, five, and if the Goose were to come to you and ask for the same, that'd be an incremental five, five spaces. I don't think ten spaces is going to, you know, have a significant impact on the way in which this area functions. I don't think, you know, I can tell you that we will not be coming back to you for any request like this for ten twenty post or parlor. And I can't see anyone else in the Center Street Lot doing it. I also, to Jeremy's point earlier about, you know, other possibilities around Grove Street, I mean, I work really closely with Penny and her team on managing Grove Street Plaza. I don't, I don't see, I don't see us coming to you asking for an expansion for melting pot or flour, water, salt, or espresso neat. The plaza as it exists is really sufficient. And the only thing I think that could happen, you know, is we did, if we did like a one night event, you know, if we had a band playing, when we can do that again, you know, we might ask to close off a little area just for a one night event, but I can't see. That would be case by case and subject to your approval. I just don't see it happening in any of these other areas. And Jeremy, I mean, you know, if you think about like, the new the new restaurant that's going to go in where Darian Grill was, you know, they've got a beautiful outdoor, very sufficient outdoor dining space on their own property. What's it called? Baja Joe's now has got a little bit of outdoor dining on their own property. So I don't think, I don't think it's likely that anyone else would, but you know, you're right to consider the possibilities of precedent, what what happens with precedent and but knowing these tenants, I don't see it. And as I said, I mean, we're we're willing to accept the idea that, you know, we we kind of have to take a little bit of risk that you might, that there might be a problem in the future and you terminate. But we would love the opportunity to try it for three years with an annual review. And if it's not working, I mean, the good news is, when you think about it, if it's causing problems, you know, it's causing problems for us because we own a couple of the other properties in the area and we, you know, we've got Upper Crust Bakery and the other tenants above nine eighty, thirty six Old Kings Highway. So I think our interests are pretty well aligned.
Fair enough. That's a good point.
Krista, if I could, I I think what you need to be concerned about is not just restaurants, but you are talking about a precedent and about allowing private use of public property for a profit. And so how do you address that?
That's a very important part.
You know, I think it's a I'm not opposed to the idea. I just think that's the the issue because it's not just about restaurants. It could be about other businesses. And so that's where I think the board will need to think carefully about how you craft this. How you address it, the the request.
Kate, are you suggesting that we should be entering into a lease agreement?
I think you absolutely should be entering into a lease agreement. And then what that entails is, I think, what you need to discuss.
Okay.
Lease lease might not be the right word, Kate.
Yeah, it might not be the right word, yes.
I think license.
We need an agreement. License, yeah.
A license agreement. Okay, that makes sense to me.
Well, and I think just, you know, putting myself in your shoes, you also, you know, we get insurance and special insurance from restaurant tenants because they are serving alcohol. You know, we can, we can kind of talk about that at the right time, you know, with the, to have like an agreement to make sure that you're also the beneficiary of insurance in case something happened. You know, I don't think that would be an unreasonable request of you.
So, you know, the other issue, thinking about a license agreement, is that these spaces have value. And, you know, does the Board of Selectmen want to recapture some of that value in a license agreement with having a fee attached to that license agreement? Could be a nominal fee, could be zero in year one, could be something in years two and three. But again, thinking in terms of the fact that this sets a precedent, that may be something that this board wants to consider. Certainly don't want to create a hardship on business. We want to support business, but the spaces do have value. Any board thoughts? Sarah?
I would agree with that. I know that things are different right now, and it's a little bit quieter in that parking lot. And when things were hopping, you know, a year and a half ago, it was very difficult to get a spot down there at lunchtime or people trying to go into CVS or what have you. And I I would love to get back to that point where parking is really at a tight premium. Because that's what we want. We want all the businesses, you know, at capacity. But there is a difficulty when we get to that point, that there is a loss of those spots. I love the idea of the outside seating. I think it's, everyone loves the restaurants that do have it. It's it's lovely. It's on a nice day, all you want to do is sit outside. So I think it's not a bad idea to attach a price.
Jeremy and Kate, or even David, do you have any sense what other towns might do in this regard for a business that uses town property? Do they pay a license fee of some kind?
I can ask Greenwich, I can find out in Greenwich. My, you know, I I think the reality is what we're going to discover is that they probably didn't charge anything
Right.
over just because it was sort of, you know, an attempt to help everybody survive the pandemic. But we can, we can do a little bit of inquiry. I don't know, Mario, from your experience in other places, do you have any insights?
No, the, I think you used the word precedent. I think that this is, that this will be a a trend that we're going to see in up in all of the towns, cities, states that are going to be dealing with this. Last night, we had dinner in a yard in Brooklyn that was literally in the middle of a public street that was closed for the benefit of this sole restaurant. Now, needless to say, I expect that New York City is going to continue to allow the outdoor dining in the public roadways and sidewalks at least until New York City recovers, which could be years and years and years. So so it it it's sort of symbiotic in in terms of, you know, we bring people to the area. Luckily, we bring more people to the area in the evening than we do during the day when the parking is at the higher demand. The the ebb and flow, what we've learned is that it's always been easier to park in this parking lot during the, from June fifteenth until August fifteenth. So we we would get the benefit, we get the benefit of of the the space, the the parking spaces being somewhat alleviated during that ten week period of the summer. Of course, the 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 parking demand is is there in May. It comes back in September. But at least for fifty percent of the of the season, the the demand is less than, less than peak. So no, I don't know what other municipalities are doing about clawing back for 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 the use of the space. I think it was just, you know, you know, one big huge pivot last February or March where where everyone just said, let's help these restaurants out. And it was a, it was a lifesaver. We did, we did really well. We survived up until about December. And, you know, the last couple, the last three months have been really quite brutal with with people not wanting to come inside. Certainly, there's there's no issue in the parking lot right now. But, you know, I think that people are very hungry for 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 outdoor dining to be restored. So that's it.
You know, Jamie, you could look at it as maybe condition approval of this sort of thing, not just to Vodega, but to other entities that might look for something similar. Condition it upon, you know, their ability to go to full capacity, not to be too intrusive into their finances, but some kind of testament to, you know, when we hit our two thousand nineteen revenue targets, you know, someplace where, you know, we'll allow you to do this on our land to let you get back to your prior level of, you know, how many how many seats you had filled on an average night.
So I hear what you're saying on that, Kate, but, you know, there there's two separate things that I'm considering. One is, what can we do to support our local businesses? And and I'm very happy to support this application and the utilization of these parking spaces, at least for a year. Certainly happy to look at a renewable agreement. But I think out, you know, to David's point earlier, I think outdoor dining is here to stay. And, you know, I I welcome the opportunity to work with the Planning and Zoning Commission to really look at what that 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 can and should look like for the future of our town. So, you know, I'm a little bit reluctant to think about taking back the, you know, the idea of being able to dine outdoors, even in this place, even in a parking lot, until we really get a sense for what the public, the Darian public really wants. And I think they like this amenity. I'm just struggling with how to craft the agreement. So I think Krista has another question.
So that's, I agree everything you're saying there, Jamie. The other question I wanted to bring up, also picking up the memo from Ed Gentile regarding the timing in reflection upon our conversations about sidewalks and snow. And I would perhaps think we want to look to moving this mid-April, the end of April. Mario, you're mentioning true, the parking lot, June to August is empty. So I don't think there's any concerns there. I am concerned we have snow or we have plowing. We've lost parking spaces because of snow. We've lost parking spaces for this outdoor dining. I may would like to tweak the timing of it. If it moves forward, I'm not sure I would be supportive of April first, but another component to it.
Yeah, and and Krista, I'm just, I'm going to give the other perspective on that. I I think, you know, I can't remember a time when we've had snow recently, still on the ground on April first. And I've been struck by how many people are willing to actually sit outside and dine in the dead of winter with a heater right next to them. So, you know, Ed in his memo here says he doesn't really think it's a big problem. um, with a heater right next to them. So, um, you know, Ed in his memo here says he doesn't really think it's a big problem. Um, so, um, while he brought it up, you know, I, I, I think April 1st is okay in my mind. But if any other board members feel strongly about April 1st, I'd love to hear it. David?
I think April, for me personally, I think April 1st is fine. And I just would, uh, uh, comment that what we're being asked to consider is a three-year term with an annual renewal period and, uh, our review period effectively. And we can certainly look at the concept of, uh, a, a potential licensing fee. But I think initially, yeah, trying to get it, uh, implemented, uh, help a local business continue to thrive in the downtown and bring some, uh, outdoor dining in the near term. And then we can study the idea of, um, a, a licensing fee and how it would be structured in the intervening time. But we could go ahead and let them do it, uh, implement it, uh, now uh, with the, with the idea that at any point during the review cycles, we could implement a fee at that time.
Jamie, if I could, uh, as I said earlier, Architectural Review Board is going to look at this on Tuesday the 16th. They're going to look at the umbrellas, uh, furniture, et cetera, all the details on, on that, the lighting. Planning and zoning is going to look at this, David, I believe, uh, March 23rd, uh, which is, I think, two weeks from tomorrow, three weeks from tomorrow. So, you do have one, if you wanted to circle back onto this at a subsequent meeting, uh, certainly if P&amp;Z does act, it won't, the earliest it would be, would be the 23rd of March. I guess each year varies. Certainly Mario's correct. This has been a little odd. People are more willing to eat out in the cold during COVID than under normal circumstances. But I have heard the same thing from other restaurateurs and landlords, which is, uh, the willingness of people to eat outdoors and restaurants economics. And their desire to have outdoor dining is greater than ever. Uh, I'll call it partially to hedge their bets, but partially to meet this new demand of outdoor dining. I've heard it from many people. Uh, so it's not just Mario talking about it. It's clearly something that's going forward. It's going to be a trend.
So what I'd like to recommend this evening is that the Board of Selectmen take a vote on the concept. And then, um, I, I assume it would have to come back to us anyway to approve whatever agreement. It is struck with Baywater Properties for the use of that property for, you know, a three-year term, but with, you know, uh, an annual review. Um, and contingent on approvals from ARB and Planning and Zoning. So would that be, uh, the right way to move forward, Kate? Like a sense of the meeting, a, a vote on the concept?
Right. Um, I, I wasn't intending for you, um, to take action approving the request tonight. So voting on the concept that you're willing to consider it and directing us to, um, come back at the meeting on the 22nd with a more firm proposal, um, I think is the right way to go.
Okay, perfect. Um, then that's how.
I would, I would just add, I think that's probably right too. Ja- Jeremy could confirm. But I think that if we can go to P&amp;Z and ARB with, you know, a sense of this meeting, which I think we can do now, that, that's helpful. I think if, if, if we couldn't have a sense of the meeting, then I think P&amp;Z would be hesitant to really opine on the matter.
Yeah, so that's great. I, I'm very happy to ask for a motion, uh, sense of the board to approve in concept. Um, Baywater's use of a number of parking spaces for outdoor dining for VdAga, um, to send, uh, an appropriate signal to the land use boards that the Board of Selectmen is supportive of helping our local restaurants, um, over the next coming couple of years. So with that, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve that sense of the meeting. It moves. May I have a second? Sarah seconds? Um, so, sorry, Sarah already seconded that. Um, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Wonderful. That's unanimous. David, thank you very much to you and your team for being here.
Oh, we really appreciate it. And like I said.
Working together.
Just again, thank you so much because of your responsiveness and pragmatism, for being so proactive. I mean, Mario would tell you, I don't think, without the outdoor dining last year, I don't think Mario would be on this call.
Well, thank you too, David, because, uh, of the, uh, your efforts with the Corbin Cares, uh, really helped out during the, uh, during the bleakest month. So thank you all.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for being here this evening and, um, we'll, I'm sure that this will move forward and move forward to time and details. Thanks a lot.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
Good night.
Thanks, David. Thanks, Mario.
Okay, uh, moving on to old business, discuss and take action on a request to accept donations and approve special appropriation request for football courts. I see we have Pam here this evening. Hello, Pam. And a couple other RCM guests.
So I wrote the memo to, um, indicate that we had the bid, bid opening on March 3rd, which was last week. We had two bidders and the lowest bidder, uh, even with the ad alternate and additional fence work came in at $45,000. A bit higher than we suspected from the quotes that were given a month or two ago. But I had a long conversation with Sean Che today. And he is very much still prepared to keep going with the campaign. And, um, either, um, we decide to stay with the 35.9, which was the bulk of the project. Um, but if fundraising campaign, oh, I'm sorry, it was 35.750. If, uh, the campaign's going well, then we can consider adding the alternate work.
Okay, um, thank you. I, I just, um, curious if Sean feels confident that he will be able to raise $45,000?
They've raised 11 so far. And he feels that once, um, we are given, we get the approvals to have, um, those that are interested in donating to write a check to the town of Darien. Right now they're kind of, they've raised $11,000 without having that effort in place. So that when people say, yes, who can I write the check to, they can feel very confident it's going right to the town. So, he feels confident. He wants to continue going. There's enough positive feedback out there. And they're also talking about, talking with the Darien Athletic Foundation and the Darien Foundation as well.
It's a really great plan, uh, and very generous to raise funds privately for it. Um, am I correct that there are no monies in the Parks and Rec budget to support this project or to fill a gap if he's not able to get to the $45,000?
No, there's not. But we did discuss today that, you know, the worst case scenario is that it takes them a little longer to raise the funding. So i- it's possible that it could bring us into the fall. And if it brings us into the fall and they're still short, then we would discuss the possibility of putting it in our capital improvement project for the following year. But he doesn't feel that's going to happen. He feels he has, he's going to have the support.
And what is his, his goal, his timing goal? Raise money just during the summer of 2021? And, um, when do they hope to construct?
Well, the original plan before we got these bids in, um, was to be able to construct in June or by, by June 1st. Now, you know, when you're doing a fundraising campaign, it's, it's, it's not necessarily guaranteed in terms of, you know, one month, two months. But, um, we, the Parks Recreation Department is going to give a big effort to, um, put some, um, marketing, um, and help that way with our database and post, posting our, on our website as well. And I think that would be very helpful to them.
Um, is it correct if I assume that if all the monies are not raised by the end of the summer, that this bid would likely have to be rebid for next year? How long is the bid good for?
Kate, you want to help me with that?
Oh, you're on mute, Kate.
Sorry about that. Um, give me a minute and I can look it up.
Thank you. Yep.
Pam, just a couple of questions. How long is the construction timeline for each of these bids? Are they different?
No, they're, they're not different. Um, I would say that, that it would be, um, two to three works, weeks worth of construction.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
So it must.
It's not, it's not a complete reconstruction, that's why.
Right. Okay. And then could you please go over the ad alternate?
Sure. So the ad alternate, uh, let's see if I printed that out here. Uh, ad alternate was fenced work. So currently today, we have a very high or tall fencing around the majority of the court. If they were to cut that down, they don't need it that high. If they were to cut that down, they'd be able to use some of that fencing that would be the, um, dividing fence that would be in the middle of the court to, to separate the four courts.
So you'd like to remove some of the high part of the fencing and then use what's been removed as the middle piece?
divider. Yep. And they, they cap it off. So they cap off the cut part. Um, you know, one, one bid was $10,000 additional money. And the one, the low bidder was actually additional, just under $5,000 to do that work.
Interesting. Okay.
How critical is that add alternate fence work to the overall project? Like if you couldn't, if you didn't get to the, if you could only raise the 38.5?
It's not critical. That's why we put it in as an add alternate.
Krista, did you have a question?
Staying on that same concept. So what is the cost associated with the work minus the fence work and the sealant?
Could you repeat that, Krista?
What is the bid for the project excluding the fence work and the sealant? Cause your memo indicates 45 includes those two.
$35,750.
I'm sorry. Okay. Now, can you talk about the sealant? How important is that? What does that do to maintenance, ongoing costs? Is that relevant?
Well, the sealant is actually in the bid. But this particular company also does an additional sealant, which is called the Right Way Crack Repairs. So, we are getting it sealed in the regular bid. So I would have to talk to him about what that big difference is.
Okay. Okay, Kate, were you able to find how long the bid is?
Yeah, I'm not seeing a, um, I'm not seeing a specification in the bid that it has to be good for a certain number of days. And it was not on the, um, there was no reference to that on the bid sheets either. So, I, I, you know, I'm going to say they're, they're not going to hold the prices um, for an unreasonable amount of time. Um, you know, I think they might hold them till the summer, but, um, I, I think if we get past July or August, they're, they're not going to be willing to hold those prices.
Are there any other board questions? I'd like to recommend that we approve this appropriation, but have it be contingent on, um, the receipt of at least the $35,750 in donations.
And then make the ad alternate work an alternative if the funds aren't raised.
Correct. That's correct.
Okay.
Jamie, in a situation like that, a, a citizen donates money to the project, we don't get to the threshold, the project doesn't move forward, what happens to the donations?
Kate, can you answer that?
Uh, well, with, um, with other things, we have, you know, put in the information that it's, we look more at when we raise more than we need, that, um, we aren't restricted to the use when we raise more than we need. I think in fairness, if we do not raise sufficient funds, we would have to return the funds.
Could we, uh, implement a process that the fundraising is done in pledges so that nobody actually writes a check until uh, we, we reach that threshold amount?
Don't see why not.
Isn't that how it's being done right now? Or no?
I'm not quite certain. I do, he, he did say they've raised $11,000 and I believe most of it is pledges.
Right. Okay.
I mean, the other thing you could do is that we, the town, do not take custody or control of any of the checks until sufficient funds are raised. So that, you know, you could write your check, um, but they don't get turned over to us until you have enough.
I support that, till we reach that 35.750 threshold. Yes, sir.
May I just ask a very quick question? I know sometimes with construction budgets, they run over slightly. Is there a possibility that we need to reserve 10 or 15% in addition to that um, number, just to make sure that we have enough to at least do the, the base amount of work? Not including the other alternatives if we're, if we're looking to just complete that?
Is there a contingency in the bid?
No.
I don't know how you want to proceed.
Um, typically with any construction project, we would have some kind of contingency in the bid.
I think Kip would agree.
Love to hear Kip's thoughts on this, our master builder.
But, you know, if, if, I would love Kip's input on this, but if a, if a vendor is willing to give a guaranteed maximum price commitment.
You raise your money from the outside, folks. I mean, it's a different story here. You're raising, you're, you're telling people, um, hey, we got a bid. The guy's willing to do it for this. Um, but you make a pledge and if you raise the money, you know, then you, then you're good to go. And if you run over, I'm sure they'll turn back to their existing donors and say, hey, we ran over a little bit. Can we, can we cover it? This is all about, you know, outside money being donated. It's not the same as making a commitment where you're, uh, making taxpayers pay a, a fee for something or, or cost something. I, I just, I don't get too excited about this one way or another in terms of the, the normal construction process. I mean, I, I'm sure the guy could overrun. There's no question. But you have your donors. You go back to your donors and say, cover, cover the cost.
What if the donors aren't there? Then we're on the hook.
So this is a $35,000 based project. A 10% contingency would be $3,500. Um, I don't think it's the type of project that is, you know, going to have big runovers. We were talking about some costs that should be known, cleaning, the, the net and the net posts, the line striping, the net divider, you know, the, I would think the only thing that would be iffy is the crack repairs. And maybe the surface cleaning and those two amounts less than $5,000 that in cost. So I don't think the contingency should be a big concern.
This isn't like going after new, uh, going into underground work and all that. The contingency, most you have here is 5%. This is not rocket science.
Then I'll amend my original recommendation and suggest that we approve this, uh, appropriation of $45,000 contingent on, uh, the ability to raise $40,000 in confirmed donations.
That's fine.
Uh, what happened with the bench? Is that still part of this project?
No.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve, uh, my recommendation for supporting the appropriation contingent upon, uh, the receipt of guaranteed donations of not less than $40,000. Sarah moves. Krista seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 JB, question for you?
Yes. Yes.
So, does that mean that they have to raise 40? Or can they, you know, continue the project at the $35,750 if they raise that minimal amount?
So, the $40,000 minimum donation threshold is to be cognizant of any potential cost overruns. We're expecting that they're gonna raise $45,000 likely, right? For the base project plus the ad alternates. So, this is just a cushion to make sure that that base project of 35-750 gets easily funded.
Okay.
Yes, we will support, we support this appropriation so long as Sean can raise $40,000. Make sense?
Yes.
All right, great. I think we're, motion seconded, voted approved. It's a wonderful contribution to our park system. I don't want that to get lost in this discussion. It's a very generous contribution to the town of Darien. I'm confident that Sean will be able to raise the money, given how beloved this sport has become in the town of Darien. So, hopefully, we'll look forward to construction sooner rather than later.
Great, thanks for your time, everybody.
Yep, thank you. Okay, we have a slew of appointments this evening. So, with your permission, may I read all of these appointments? And then we review them in bulk? Would that be okay? Or do you prefer me to vote on it?
All together.
Okay, great. So, appointment of Greg Giraci to the Youth Commission for a term expiring on March 31st, 2023. Appointment of Amanda Segura to the Beautification Commission for a term expiring on November 30th, 2023. Appointment of Dan Nalowayd as a full member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term expiring on June 30th, 2023. Appointment of Colleen Cavitis to the Beautification Commission for a term expiring on November 30th, 2022. Appointment of Jackie Stoddard to the Beautification Commission for a term expiring on November 30th, 2022. Reappointment of Mary McCarthy to the Commission on Aging for a term expiring on March 31st, 2023. Reappoint Louise, Mary Louise Morgan to the Parks and Rec Commission for a term expiring on March 31st, 2023. And reappointment of Reese Hutchison to the Sewer Commission for a term expiring on December 31st, 2023. A motion to approve those appointments and reappointments, please. Sarah moves. May I have a second?
Second.
Krista seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you so much. Just an outstanding group of town volunteers.
Thank you to all of those that have raised their hands as her. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, we have three sets of meeting minutes. Review and approve the minutes of our regular meeting of February 22nd. I'll entertain a motion when you're ready for any corrections or additions.
So, move.
Kip moves. May I have a second?
Second.
Krista seconds. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Special meeting minutes of February 22nd. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Kip moves. May I have a second?
Second.
Sarah, I see Sarah's hand. Sarah seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and our special meeting minutes of February 23rd. Motion to approve. Sarah moves. May I have a second? Krista seconds. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Okay, thank you. Agenda review. Okay, hearing nothing, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
David moves. May I have a second? Kip seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you, everyone. Have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you, Jamie. Thanks, Kate.